Uh, please take a look at the meeting minutes to review, to approve the minutes. Uh, motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the playing board and peanut called February four, two thousand twenty-one.
Second?
One second.
Uh, we're gonna have to designate an alternate tonight, so we only have one. That's lucky when it two weekends in a row. Uh, our new business.
We'll take a vote on the minutes.
Yeah, I thought we, yeah, we just did, didn't we?
No, we did, made a motion.
Oh, take a vote on the minutes to approve the minutes? Take a look at the new business, it's, uh, first up would be Iron Tail Saloon, five-five-nine, Route one oh nine, map one-four-eight, lot zero-zero-one. Modification of conditional use permit. The owner, Greg Martinez, he's already at the table, so if you introduce yourself, please.
Yes, hi, Greg Martinez, Iron Tail Saloon.
Can you give us a description of what, what you wanna go for?
Uh, well, there's, uh, indicated, there's a few pieces here, uh, initially, uh, I was contacted by, uh, Ken Paul, and he, he said that I needed to bring my conditional use permit up to date. And, uh, there were some things that, uh, primarily the outdoor eating and drinking, he said, he didn't have approved before, but in fact, I, I found out after the fact that that wasn't placed, and, and he was mistaken, I thought he was mistaken, but, you know, I, I couldn't be certain, and then I followed up, and I, I understand that that was approved, that was part of the original conditional use permit. Because I, I, I got, I got, I drew permits when I first, uh, went in, uh, early two thousand eleven, late two thousand ten, early two thousand eleven, to add the service bar on the backside, as well as add the patio in the front, with picnic tables, you know, for that intent. And then, uh, from there, uh, the outdoor music, uh, that I've been doing since I've opened, uh, I, apparently that is not part of the conditional use, and I wanna get that added to the conditional use approved, and, uh, to, uh, to accommodate that, although it hasn't been, it hasn't been a major issue, but, uh, to accommodate the additional noise that's generated by outdoor music, I'm proposing a twelve-foot-high wall with a three-foot deflector on the top of the wall, uh, to mitigate sound from any outdoor shows. And, uh, also to break, you know, also in, in an effort to mitigate the sound created, there's also a knee wall that serves several purposes. That, the, uh, the concrete slab out there is the former slab of the, of building that used to stand, and that I got torn down two or three years ago, and there is a, there is a brise, so that's also a safety issue for me, so I'd like to put that up around the perimeter, as indicated very much, and where it begins on the right-hand side of the building, that's about ground level, so there's no trip hazard, but all the way around it is to where I have it indicated, so that's also gonna break out sound coming from the van, which would be set up in front of, you know, what I recall, what I refer to as the fire room, uh, where the, uh, with the, uh, big fire of the water tank is inside, right along the line.
Yeah, where the power lines come into that building still?
Yes, yes, exactly, and, uh, the stage will be on that side, playing music toward...
Can you point that out, one hand?
...to Loom Pond.
Is it right here?
Yeah, that was the, the remaining part of the orig, the, the building there that I tore out, and I didn't tear that down, probably.
That's where the band is gonna go?
Uh, it's gonna go on this side, on the slide right here.
That's where the band would go?
That's where I'd like them to go, yes, right into, currently being in the, uh, uh, what's it called, the beach?
I've got a pointer, if that helps.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
You, you want this one?
Thank you so much.
It's, uh, right there.
Okay. Right here?
Yep, floating around.
Oh, yeah, good.
You dropped your hat, too.
So, since I've opened, the van has generally been in this area here, there's an exit, uh, we exit into the back area, and this is where all my, my tables are, there's service here, uh, I, I sometimes do some food out here as well, and so the van will be moving from here, this area here, I have a tent up in, in season, and that tent would come out, and the van will be going up here on a portable stage that I have purchased, the, some of you might have seen it sit in the yard, uh, it's a, it's a trailer of like forty-foot long, fourteen-foot wide, and that would go right here. And then, so the sound will be going towards the back end of the property, uh, the perimeter wall starts over in this corner, like I say, it's twelve feet high, twelve feet high, all the way down, and the twelve-foot will stop here, and then over here, I think I've got a six-foot. But this is the, the twelve-foot, is what I'm proposing, and as an exciting thing, you know, it serves, it serves a double, dual purpose, for primarily to, to mitigate the sound generated, and also for security, and for security purposes as well.
How about the other side of the property?
Over here?
Yeah.
Okay, well, this is, this is generally the main entrance, and then traffic flow comes around here, uh, this past season, this was new for me, and I had lines painted in, and those lines will remain, uh, flow comes out of here, I've got parking here, I've also got a parking hole through here, uh, people have to, when it gets busy, sometimes it's parking on lawn areas over here as well.
But no fence in place for that side of the property?
Uh, no, 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 it's just all open, and, uh, the, the fence area, you know, comes off the backside of this building here, there'll be a rolling gate here, and a rolling gate here. So, a fence in, this is, uh, the front, where the picnic tables are, uh, on the front side, I've got a small rail out there, and then I've got a, a fence that goes right to the, to the edge of the fire, the fire, and suppression room, and then the fence continues on there, so basically, this whole area here, this area here is contained, this is all open parking, and, and people entering the facility from this area, but they will also, I also have allowed them to drive around back through the gate, and my intent this year is to, I'll see how it works, I'll only allow motorcycles out back, because they can have some problems with, with vehicles coming in, and security issues, people bringing in leisure from outside and all that, so I, I would very likely just move this entrance to one side as well. And I do have arrows engaged, you know, passive traffic, whatever, that were painted on last season.
Greg, could you go back to, uh, where you were saying, even having the music?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, what's that, that's a tent you have there?
This year?
Yeah.
That's just, that was with the plan, you know, the, uh, the contractor should put it there, and told him I'm gonna be putting a portable stage, and this was a few years ago, and he stuck it there, but, okay, that's, that's non-existent, the stage will be going up here, and the backdrop will be the backside of the building.
So what is... What is the gain of putting the van closer to the road, rather than being in that corner? Does the van, uh, help, completely?
I'm sorry, let's follow.
He's wondering, what's the, the goal from moving the van to where it originally was, to over there?
Okay.
What's the gain?
The gain in that is, uh, to increase my, you know, audience participation, and kinda open up the whole area, it's, it is, you know, going forward, I, I wanna do some bigger shows, you know, with, with commission, and, uh, it just seems, you know, the way the property's set up, and the buildings where they are, that just allows for bigger audience, if I put the van here, and they're playing this way, very limited on space here, plus, this is where all my picnic tables are, so this would be an area, just open, just an open area where folks can gather and listen to music, in front of the stage here.
Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying. I understand, believe it later, and tell them, you know, the back. I remember, yeah, I remember this, um, last fall, I was playing an opera over the decibel of your music, uh, myself personally, I don't have an issue with that. And I guess if you both might, whether you're going to, uh, with these walls and fences that you're playing on, or something like that?
Yeah.
Would that hopefully cut down on the best hopes for the neighborhood?
Absolutely, it's gonna, it's definitely gonna mitigate the, the sound, also, mind you, last season, when there was noise complaints coming in, and I was very aware of them, I did purchase a decibel meter, and then I was out, I was not to my property line, I was out somewhere in this area, and it was during the daylight hours, so I'm allowed sixty, I think it goes to fifty at ten PM.
Yeah.
But I was below sixty, I was about fifty-seven, and I have, I have video, but it's a matter of fact in my phone, that I could share with you, and, uh, I, I did, uh, I did some readings, and I was not in violation, when I, I did take a reading, uh, the van was playing here, and I took a reading from about, let me see where the building is, I took a reading, a reading right about here, and I was at seventy-five.
Right, I mean, myself personally, uh, people say I exceed the noise ordinance, uh, when I talk, uh, when the, if I was a passable reading, so, uh...
Well, you know, I, I, just, as far as noise goes, and I'm sure some of you already know this, but like, uh, a normal conversation is fifty to sixty-five decibels, for a normal conversation, so if the noise ordinance is sixty...
That's pretty minimal.
It is, it is, and I'm not, and I'm not saying that noise doesn't travel, I, I grew up on, on Route one, I've been here for, for forty-something years, and across from my house now is the Amtrak train, I sleep rough, 'cause it's what I'm used to, you know, outside of the shade in the house, but, um, but, you know, I'm not, there, there's definitely noise to generate, that will be there, but also, we've got, you know, fireworks all summer long, boats and jet skis and all that.
Okay, rounds that they operate.
They don't bother me.
Do you have some sort of engineering study, or engineering information, that says that twelve-foot wall, or whatever that thing is, dampens the sound?
Do I have, no, I, I, that, that came from assistance from a, a friend of mine who was a sound engineer, I, I don't know if he's certified, but he's been, he's been in...
Has walls, this, has it been used in other places successfully?
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, I mean, any solid wall, and, and mind you, if, if, uh, my, going forward, uh, if you look at the construction of the wall, it's, it's two bays and it's solid pine boards, one bay, solid pine boards on the, on the face, and what my, what I would do is, you know, depending on what my readings are this season, with experience and how that, effective that is, that wall is, I can go a step further if I need to, and that would be to put foam insulation on the backside, and then another layer of wood, because, you know, if I need to, but I...
Does the town have a decibel thing, or?
No.
Really?
What I plan on doing is that I'm gonna take off the, the, uh, the back end of my property, I'm gonna make sure that it's passable by foot, day and night, and if anybody needs to check my levels, you'll be a path, because I'm gonna be checking myself, and I'm gonna need, sometimes, if I get a noise complaint, I'm gonna need to get out there, start right away and do a reading.
Like, there's a plan on, uh, operating, do, if I was a live music, to ten?
Uh, I would like to do some late, and some shows that go to ten, primarily, up to this point, ninety-nine percent of my shows are done at five PM, while outdoor music is done, but I've been doing some shows on Friday evenings.
I mean, ten o'clock, not unreasonable.
No, not, not for the business that I'm in, but, you know, it, it's, you know, what folks are used to, is a lot quieter.
Well, you're kinda caught there, because you also have to do what the government is saying, they're saying, uh, keep stuff out of the inside, and move on the outside, uh, which, what you're doing is...
Yeah, but that's temporary, Dennis.
Well, that's not forever, been a year now.
Right, but it's not gonna be forever.
I don't know that, John!
Well, that's, that's, that's why I have to leave my... Yeah, yeah, that's, that's where he was saying, that's where he took his readings from here.
Yeah, for a music club.
Probably grand, yeah, for years.
That alley, yeah. I bet it's very minimal, because the building blocks it.
Right.
Oh, I would think, I would think that's a, that's a solution.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, my name's Ben Smith, I'm the Towns Contract Planner, uh, with North Star Planning. I, I had sent an email that was included in, in folks' packets this evening with, uh, getting into some of this conversation, uh, the, the first thing that I wanted to note was, you know, for the record, the just complete application would be, uh, a deed or other, and I'm sure you've had it, you've been there.
I'm gonna have to go over to your, and, and get a copy, because I cannot copy it for the life of me.
So, you know, that being said, I, I think that, um, some additional narrative or description of what the wall would be made out of, and it is good to hear you describe that, elaborate, uh, it'd probably be good for the board to have a, a detail or some kind of drawing of what that would entail.
That is coming, uh, because when, when I put in for a building permit, because of the height of the wall, um, I was required to have an engineer, and it is being engineered, fellas, Joe Leisure of South Portland, he's done work for you before, just like everybody else, he's just heard, I was hoping to have it before now, but, you know, I, I expect it within the next two weeks, and as soon as I do have it in hand, certainly, I'll get it submitted to, uh, the code office, and as well as have a copy, and then we'll get a better detail than I can provide, because I'm sure he's gonna tell me about fasteners and everything, what I have to use, my, what I'm saying, I'm using telephone poles, pine, in, in two bays, you know, two bays and one bay, and then on the, uh, on the roof, I intend to put over the top, just to preserve the wood, probably some metal roofing, a small section of metal roofing, so, you know, to keep any snow from, time or, or water damage or whatever.
Oh, I have a question, Mr. Martin, um, Martinez?
Martinez, yeah.
Martinez, sorry, um, am I to understand that the six-foot wall that you mentioned at that section at the corner, is that going to be twelve as well, or is that gonna stay six?
No, no, that's, that's gonna stay six, I'm not saying it won't go to twelve, uh, I think, you know, for aesthetic purposes, I don't know how, I mean, I'm trying to clean the place up, I, I'm not sure how a twelve-foot wall would look out there, the rest of my twelve-foot wall, nobody's gonna really see, because of the trees and everything, but it's, this whole corner, as you know, uh, they're, you know... Okay, uh, this whole corner is open to the road, and, uh...
Does it make a difference if you have six feet or twelve feet, I'm just wondering, as far as the sound?
As far as the sound, for sure.
Because that's pretty close to where you have the band.
Yeah, but the band is gonna be, the, the, usually the speakers would be coming towards the rear of the property, and not that one.
It'll be probably what most likely, from what your sound engineer friend said, might deflect off this building, where you store your water for the fire, is it, will push it forward to the back of the property?
Right.
Okay.
Right, and then, you know, they say, and, and the, the piece off the top is my idea, just a piece, keep, you know, keep it from going out, because, you know, there was a complaint coming from, from the pond, three quarters of a mile away, from where the sound was beginning.
Right.
You know, obviously, I, I wasn't there, I never took a reading on the same, can't hear it, but, you know, uh, that's why I thought, well, that might help that situation, if it's, you know, going out, because the sound will go out, and it shoots off into the air.
Right, have you ever taken readings from, per se, this other side?
Yeah, yes, and...
Nothing?
Not even close, yeah, not even close, because obviously, because I, I've got that massive building there.
Right.
That's keeping all the sound from penetrating, you know, every, every piece of wood, every structure, every, every inch of solid mass, we lose the noise.
Right.
And, uh, Mr. Chair, just, um, having dealt with outdoor venues and, uh, in other communities, I, I think it, from an enforcement standpoint, and from a operations standpoint, it's, it's difficult to, um, enforce decibels and noise, because number one, uh, code officer's not always gonna be out there at nine or ten o'clock at night, and, uh, you know, you can very easily get into, you know, differences of opinion of, you know, was it fifty-eight decibels or sixty-three decibels, I would encourage the board and, and the applicant to think about limiting, uh, based on hours of operation, and, uh, and putting an emphasis on that, as well as number of events, and, and when the events happen, as, as opposed to getting too hung up on, you know, how much a, a twelve-foot fence with no insulation, or a twelve-foot fence with insulation would, would attenuate some of those noise concerns, I think it's much more clear-cut to think about this from a, you know, when will music end, and, uh, how often will that be, will it be, you know, one Friday a month, or every single Friday between, you know, all summer long, those, those kinds of things, I think, would be more practical and easier for the, the town and, and the operator to, to get a handle on.
I agree with that, but that doesn't help the person who's complaining about the noise.
Fair enough.
And so, do we have any records of how many complaints were you received for noise? Are there any records along those lines?
I remember there was three people.
Formal complaint policy?
There is a formal complaint policy, but I have to do some digging.
Written three separate, um... Right, and who do they go to?
They would go to us.
I know one of them.
We should have, we should have a complaint file.
Well, what we've done in the past, then, uh, just last year, uh, with the, with the doggy care, uh, kind of, they're supposed to have a ice cream place in the midst of golf, and I can't remember off the top of my head, but there was a time they had to shut down their music and whatever, um, on the weekends, and that, it was, I thought it was like nine o'clock, or ten o'clock, uh, or something like that, I, I don't exactly remember, but that is what we did, it, it wasn't really, there was a lot of concern, there was a lot more concern about that doggy care, daycare from the public, uh, than there was in my, uh, there was a plenty of people that addressed the black dogs, and anything like that, there's probably a dozen, and you remember Gavin, who was on the sidewalk, there must have been twenty-five people, uh, I guess, being in the commercial zone, um, it's just something you gotta, you gotta try to contain, you know, a little noise elements and stuff, but, um, you've got a business there, and it goes with the business.
The, um, to Ben's point, though, it's not clear to me in one and two, what we're talking about, you know, how much we're talking about, you described, um, Saturdays, Sundays, Bike Week, uh, and then additionally, you wanna do ten more, uh, ticketed performances, and that would still be within the three hundred capacity?
No, no, that's like you said, that would be in case, but case, this is where I would have to, I'm asking, I'm, I'm, that's the whole, whole order.
All right, so what?
But as far as, as far as the music, my, my regular music, I'm currently, I'm doing Friday nights, and that's done at ten o'clock on Friday nights, outside, during the day, on those other days, music ends at five o'clock, generally, one to five PM is what I've been doing for years, and then, like I say, Friday evenings, uh, we do a show at six to nine, smaller show.
And so, you're asking for an extra hour now on this?
That would only be for any, you know, the, the request of the theater events.
Like in the Freedom National Acts, per se?
Yeah, yes.
That would be on the time to ask for a mass gathering, sorry.
I'm sorry?
That's a, that would be on the time to ask?
Right, right, because I would have to, I would also have to, you know, I'd have to contact the fairgrounds, or, you know, adjacent property owners, and get, you know, these properties for bar, things that I'm sure.
The, the months, that, what traditionally do you, what months do you operate?
I open at the end of April, this year will be, I believe, the twenty-ninth, and then I close on this day, as soon as the motorcycles and the boats go away, it's all over, it's just, it's a big building to be.
I think, uh, related to that, um, idea of operations and capacity, it seems like the original twenty-eleven conditional use was for three-hundred-person capacity?
That's inside capacity, yeah, I believe.
It says inside and out.
Combined.
Combined.
Yeah.
So I was, I was wondering if, if you had some idea of what, uh, audience or capacity could be as part of this application?
On, on a big, for a big show?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, you know, could be a thousand people, could be a thousand people, but I mean, that would require security, all kinds of insurance, uh, court parties, like, you know, that's a whole other animal, but generally, you know, like, those guys that are three-hundred is, is accurate, as far as regular daily operations, as I, as I operate now, as I have, as I own, on the flip side, this additional piece, like I said, would require, it's gonna require, obviously, future, you know, a lot more than what we have on the table today, you know, or whatever.
Yeah.
I, I, I've drawn a mass gathering permit to you before, and, uh, you know, if we go all those things, you can bar.
And, and I don't know what the threshold for a mass gathering is, maybe you do, if you've pulled...
I think it is three-hundred.
I, actually, I think it's, you know, it'd be cosign permit for three-hundred, but it's, I think, in excess of a hundred and fifty.
So, uh, oh, I'm just, uh...
I was just gonna ask about parking, is there adequate parking there, do you, you said you close this gate sometimes for the motorcycles, and will you allow them to go in here, would that, when you had the concerts and things like that?
No, no, that would all be closed off.
So would there be adequate parking out here for them?
No, no, that's where I would have to get, uh, at least the fairgrounds, which I've done before.
Okay.
How about your normal show, excuse me, the, the, you know, just the normal concerts we have?
Oh, yeah, the money parking, yeah, yeah, I mean, there have been, I've been blessed with some, some events that, uh, people have showed up for, I think, that, since I've been there, so, going into my eleventh year, I recall, like, three times, when people had parked on the street, on the side of the street, what do you say, you know, like, when the active fair is in town, you know, people park all over the, all over the roads, yeah, I, not in the way, I mean, but, I don't know how many people the active fair draws in one day, I don't know many people, I have no idea.
Depends on the rain.
I'm sorry?
Depends on the rain.
Right, right, well, it's just like, hey, it's raining, but not down that way.
I'm like, you would just get, you know, the show, it's done by this one.
Yeah, but in that, I, you know, I'm looking, you know, I like to do as many ten shows, but I never really, I have everything to learn about doing something like that, yes. You know, it's just for me, you know, I've got to start small and then build up. Let's say a thousand, I'm not starting off with a thousand to be quite honest with you, that number scares me. I'm not ready for that. I have to, I have to get, I have some skills I need to develop to be able to manage that kind of.
Sure.
But I mean, I'm sure some, some events I've had, you know, it could be as many as, you know, 500 people on site. Probably, but, you know.
And I, and I would advise you and the board to be thinking about what the normal or what, what could be in the next year or two certainly, maybe save yourself a trip back next year to amend the conditional use again, which may be the way you want to go as, as you learn. But I would encourage you to, you know, as you flesh out the application, you know, think about what, what you're gonna need realistically over the next couple of years. And that would give the board a good sense of, of what they'd be looking at as far as, you know, like you said, the site needs around restrooms and parking in the general area, not only on your site.
Right. Yeah, okay.
So the parking area on the left, is that, it's not existent yet where you have motorcycles defined? On the left side?
Oh, yeah.
Over there, tell us about that.
This is.
What does that look like right now?
It, it's all grass around it.
Yeah.
You know, I do, you know, I get grass, I mow it, I mow it through the season and generally it ends up being a parking place. And like you said, I want, coming, going into the next season, I'm gonna limit that to motorcycles only because of, you know, the issues I've had with cars back there.
Did you have, did you have that many tables there last year?
No, no, this is, this is just what you put on there.
Oh.
I have, I have on-site 40 picnic tables.
Yeah.
There won't be any more than that.
Yeah.
You know, primarily, most of my picnic tables are in this area here and in this area here. This is my service area here and here. When I say service area, this is my outdoor bar and food area.
That's where food is brought out?
Yes, yes.
Is there cooking outside too?
Uh, there has been and there will continue to be in a portable way, you know, that, maybe even some, some food trucks and what have you will be, will be in confines of the fence line to, you know, for, for bigger events. Because it's, it's very, very challenging these days to find cooks. I mean, I, myself, I've been in the kitchen for the last.
Three years.
Actually, that's, that's what I do. So it's, it's, it's challenging though, even I, I manage to manage from the kitchen. But yeah, I, I, I do need some assistance to take some of the, some of the weight off the kitchen just to get everybody fat. So that's why I'm thinking, you know, I would bring in portable food vendors on a case by case basis. But like, once again, this is just all over the area. And you know, I, I do intend to, I, maybe I'm skipping ahead, but lighting, you would require about lighting. And the only, the only additional lighting, I have the building lit up all around, but I need to light up this area here. You know, so off the fence, I'll be putting some lighting into this area away from the road. So it shouldn't, it shouldn't leave the property, it should be on the left, it shouldn't leave the property.
So it'll be all that light.
I think when we have this many parking spaces, we like to see vegetated islands in there. For every one, for every 20 parking spaces, there's some sort of a island. So maybe we can get those in the design.
Okay, where are we talking?
Well, it's in the back, you've got 20 parking spaces in a row, the longest line.
Along here?
Yeah, 20 of them there, so you'd want to have, you know, 10 spaces, then an island of some sort. Doesn't have to be big, can be the size of a eight by, 10 by 10 parking space or 10 by 15, whatever you're.
Have you, have you been to this, have you been to the site, maybe a half?
I mean, I drive by every, every day.
Because I would invite you to, I would invite you to drive in, because you know. But I do have vehicles parked across the back here, it's all gravel through here, it's not paved, the pavement stays close to the building. So there's grass there, shrubbery and all that, but for me to put, put divided every 20 spaces, I think it's a necessary futility, no one's gonna see it.
And this is a new bike?
No.
I think that would be different.
Oh, I think this is new parking, it's not, it's just an open gravel area, there's no parking spaces defined yet.
No.
But the whole thing, it's, it's field parking.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's festival parking, I, I don't know how to.
We have a parking attendant pointing out where people should park on.
Well, we do, we do on occasion, if we have a big, you know, we've got people with flags directing people where to go.
Yeah. Well, I know, I know in the ordinance where it's supposed to pass for.
Isn't there a swale?
Island every 20 spaces.
Isn't there a swale?
Just keep that in mind, I'm gonna, I'd like to see some vegetation, shade trees or something.
A swale that kind of dips down to the water to channel it.
Could be nice for the customers too, if it's a hot day.
Yeah. Well, I, I feel compelled to have you come to the site and see, unfortunately, evidence frozen over, so it's hard to get a good feel about. I can see gravel there and it's all those, you know. You, you can't even see those spaces from one on island, although I certainly understand what you're saying, but it is all gravel.
Right, it's more to, it has more to do with just visibility as to like, you know.
Well, it's aesthetics, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, for people who are in there too, not just people who are observers.
I understand.
Yeah. Also for, you know, water to go, you know, if you pave that thing, you need to have somewhere for the water to go anyway. Which a lot of times islands can serve as retention areas or infiltration areas.
Yeah, the, the only additional paving I did, I, I, I won't do any further paving forward, but just where the tanks used to be, I finally got that paved, which was over.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, over in this area.
Where they used to have diesel, yeah.
All paved up. And then like I say, the paving, it's around the building, yeah, this is the paving line right here.
Yeah. About how many parking spaces do you have on the pavement on the right hand side?
I have, I have.
Is this an accurate representation what's up there?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay.
What he's here for tonight?
Just to make sure everything's on his plan that he wants, and I mean, I'm getting 50 spaces, so.
No, I'm just saying, what he's here for tonight is a change in this condition we use. Basically, the noise.
The music and the noise?
Yeah.
Yeah, Frank Ireland, the outdoor, the outdoor music bands.
And I'm just saying with the parking, I mean, his parking is better than that for. That one, the parking, thank you.
I also came down this road before when, as far as a parking goes, the parking count, that becomes an issue, well, how big is an actual motorcycle park?
You know, if you solve.
How does that, you know?
And where's the difference? What was the difference between a motorcycle park and a.
Oh, yeah, yes, obviously a motorcycle.
Three.
And if he decided to put in a parking lot, then, to me, then, it would fall into the, um, an island every 10 spaces and stuff like that. You're not here for that. If you do, I can do it someday, it will be back. Then we'll deal with it then, but that's just my.
I, I never say ever, but I don't see any more paving going in.
Can I address them?
Well, what's the deflector on the top of the wall gonna propose to be made out of and does it angle in?
The same, same material, yes, it angles.
It's to, there'll be a, there'll be a wooden, wooden structure with metal roofing on top of it maybe?
Same material, but I was, no. And that's what I proposed, I don't know what the engineer's gonna send back to me. I need to come back and say, well, you can't use that, this is what you gotta use. So.
So it has like a 45-degree angle in where it's moving?
Yes, yeah, so like I say, what you have is you got the noise coming out and then.
Shoots it, it kicks it back down, kind of kills it off.
With that as opposed to going over the top of the fence.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes, sir.
Um, around the parking area, if I memory serves me correctly, I believe there's a pretty large vegetated area, like a lawn section around where some of the cars are parked on perhaps the U-shaped part.
This here?
Correct.
And then this is all lawn?
Right, and then even out to this back portion.
Is this what we're talking?
Sure, but even near this arch portion in there?
Yes.
There's, that's all lawn there and I believe there's a drainage swale in the back too, isn't there?
Uh, actually the drainage swale is over on this end.
On that end, okay.
Yeah, the water comes down this way and then right in there.
So where is your septic system?
Uh, out here on the.
Hill.
There's a cover there, right, there's some.
Uh, there, there's actually just pipes coming up, there's cover, but when I have it empty every year, they dig up the covers and pull them off. So the, the sewage leaves the building in the front here and runs down here to the lead.
Sure. Now, do you, do you have a plan for the increase of capacity of these vents, these events for the sewage specifically? Are you gonna bring porta potties in to facilitate those?
It's only a, you know, if it was something I was doing 24/7, but it's a, you know.
Situation.
10 events a season at best.
Sure.
At best, 10 events a season, so if we go test it.
Sure.
Pretty much a bath house would be.
Right. Yep. Thank you.
We'll actually build an 100,000 dollar system.
Right, that's not, that's not.
I did changes.
I mean, I put, I put, some people, you know, people have just hung up about porta potties, put porta potties all over. It's a waste, right? Everybody insists on going inside, there's a mile long line inside, especially one, obviously. No one else uses a porta potty there, that's the point.
There's one every day.
I put them there to, you know, to meet, you know, whatever requirements are there.
Keep up with.
They're overused, except once in a while somebody drives a bike, kind of laugh because guys have construction stuff, they, they use it more than the customers.
And again, what was the rationale for 12 feet? I mean, it seems to me that, that there's some calculations to be made from the distance of the stage to the wall. Is that what drove the 12 feet?
No, no, that just, I just love that, that was, to be quite honest, that was a reasonable height. You know, that, that could be, that could be managed.
What is the height of the stage approximately?
Uh, part, uh, no. Between three and four feet up.
So you got four feet and then you got a six-foot individual standing on it, so you got 10 feet, the, the sound's coming from about 10 feet up.
Yeah, fair enough, yes, sure. I understand it's a sticky situation, but I already got it, I mean, it's hard to set.
Do you deem the application complete?
Well, I want to put this out there. There's five on the ground, I think no issues. And hopefully everybody is wrong, I'm not the talking, I'm not the subject.
Well, I think, you know, I'd like to see some engineering information that says 12 feet is right for that.
And. Have to ask if the application's.
You know, so you get the maximum effect to deaden the sound, given that there's been complaints. Yeah, I don't know what it is, 12 feet might be good, don't know.
I just, you know, I, I, I can tell you where I've seen any tenser or higher than 10 feet.
Plus you're gonna have the three foot.
I have a concert venue. I have a concert venue.
Like at the Tweeter Center or something like that, but that's, you're dealing with stacks of speakers and stuff, you know, are you gonna have that type of thing or, when you say national venue, you're not gonna have kids showing up there with?
No.
You know what I mean?
No, no. Anything's possible.
Right.
I'm not gonna shoot myself in the throat, anything's possible, but you know, I'll just put it, give a shot, see how it works out, if I need to do more, I do more. You know, you want to propose it, it's, uh, it's expensive to put it up there, but there's a lot of fans.
Look, just ask, ask the, ask the board.
You think on his application, he should add porta potties?
Well, I, I, um, there's a couple of things working here, first of all, in the application, for, for the existing stuff that you've been doing. We talk about traditionally, we have things on these days and these times. And then generally, we do it at this or that, I'm uncomfortable approving that. I would rather say it's every Friday, it's Memorial Day, and that's it, so we approve, you know, we know what, what we're approving. And then I, I think the National Acts or the, the 10, the 10 large shows, that's a big deal to me. I mean, you know, we're essentially making a big decision here from our rural quiet town to create a concert venue. Limited, limited, but that to me is a pretty big decision to me. I think the fencing, again, I'd like to see something that says, yeah, that's a good plan to deaden it. And then some specificity on the shows you have, Bike Week, Fridays, whatever it is, instead of just generally and, you know, that, that sort of language. And I think that all, you know, I don't have objections. But I think including the 10 national shows or ticketed performances, that's, is a pretty big deal for the town.
I have to say, I agree with John, what, what concerns me, I'm new to this. It doesn't, it doesn't mean that, that would happen, but when you say a thousand people, I look at the little checklist on our list on the bottom of conditional uses, it says a proposed project does not. And then that says creator cause to be created unreasonable noise or traffic of this type. I just think a thousand people, vehicles is a lot. And I, and I don't, I don't know how, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with that. How can you make me feel comfortable with a thousand people at a concert? We don't have a police force.
No. Obviously, no, but I believe under the amendments, the mask gathering ordinance requires me to have security. And I work very closely with the York County Sheriff's Department and, you know, would you be willing to grant me lesser shows on specific times, we've done at 10 o'clock?
I agree with John, yes.
Also, how about, how about saying, well, this coming summer, we'll try two shows and see how it goes. And then revisit it next year, next season after the summer, if I, if, you know, I can do two shows, see how it goes, not only for myself, but also for the town. And if it turns into a disaster, for all time, for all time doing it.
Well, I have a procedural question, you, you mentioned this big event requirement, where you gotta get the police and all that.
Mask gathering.
Mask gathering. You do that on an individual basis for each of these shows?
For the, for any big show that I would have, you know, outside, you know, like I'm gonna be, for example, let's say I'm gonna have an entrepreneur come in and, well then I would plan that event and get all the pieces in place to meet the ordinance, to meet security, to meet my insurance. There's a whole lot of that, so I'm like, say it's a, it's a learning process for me too, I'm not diving into this. Gladly I'm going easy, but going easy, you know, height, regardless of.
Yep, real metal.
We're part of being a good neighbor, I love this community, they're very supportive of me and they're very supportive of my business and. business, and I certainly don't want to shoot myself in the foot, because I plan on, I want to stay.
So the procedural question is, do we as a planning board have to give him approval for the two, 10, whatever number of shows is before he can go forward for that mass gathering permit?
No.
Wouldn't he be in violation of his, wouldn't, wouldn't he?
You can still go to the town with your mass gathering permit.
But are you guys done that before any group selects? I thought this would be a good place to chat about it.
I believe that's where Mr. Paul came into play, when he'd had a couple of those mass gathering permits and the gatherings outside and the music outside, he was, he was afraid that he may have been endangering his existing conditional use, minus the piece that he had already, obviously he missed that when he read the conditional use, but, but I think that was the intent from Mr. Paul, asking him to come back and review the conditional use, because he was afraid that he was operating on a fringe of violating his current conditional use.
I mean, it's letting it, granted, uh, the situation within now, two, three times a year, a mass gathering permit, but for a cash show, uh, or whatever it's for, and when they do that, they require, uh, an ambulance, usually on, uh, EMD services onsite, uh, and you have to pay for police services onsite, uh, and if the fire department isn't gonna be onsite, which is required sometime, you have to pay for that, uh, I mean, that's all of the sludge, and that's just a standard.
Well, I was gonna say, that is standard for, for anybody that's doing any kind of festival, concert, whatever, you're doing a fair, even a fair, but the only, the only issue that I've run into in the past is that I cannot go through to York County Sheriff's Department and hire them, they're not for hiring, they were, they were, the county.
We know if we have a town.
Right, right.
We should be a lot.
Yeah, so, but for myself, once some, if I'm having an event, let's say it's gonna be 1500 people onsite, I would feel better if there was some way that we could have extra patrol cars, because I listen to my customers all the time, all the guys sitting inside, it's a good deal. You know, I don't want anything wrong. You know, I, I'm a former, I used to be a trooper many years ago, I got my enforcement on the block, and those guys are okay with me, and I would love to see them in front of my business, I'd love to see them in the parking lot, I invited them to come in, but most of the guys didn't want, but I want them in the scene, because it makes people think, it makes people think, they're a lot more responsible. You know, yeah, yeah.
I'm fine with what John's asking, Pat's asking, it's gonna be date specified, um, and they'll say come back and see what's right, what hasn't. I do know Greg's reputation, uh, he's always been very positive towards the town, and I don't really do anything intentionally, and he's in good faith, if we did this for a year, uh, and I know Greg will come back, and, uh, if that was how it was, how it worked, if we did any more changes.
Mr., is it Paul?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we say three shows this coming season, just to feel it out, and then if the first one, like I said, if the first one is a disaster, that I can't reasonably correct, what's that?
The, yeah, the, the application, uh, for conditional use is not a, um, a time-based thing. I appreciate where you're coming from, and, and it sounds like it's, it's very much in line with what the applicant is saying about, uh, you know, learning and experimenting and correcting and making things better. Uh, I, I would recommend a course that, that thinks about, you know, hours and number of events, this, this, this board is, doesn't approve mass gathering permits, as the applicant has rightly pointed out, those go to the select board. So if instead the, the planning board is thinking about the kinds of site concerns or issues that could be associated with these kinds of events, whether it's noise, lighting, traffic, parking, those kinds of things, and, and comes to some reasonable number of events, whether it's four, or 12, or 20 over the course of the year, how many ever of those actually go over and require a mass gathering permit? It'll be up to the applicant to deal with the select board on those things and all of the additional things that go along with a mass gathering permit. I think what, what this board is, is going to be considering is, uh, what kind of site accommodations are possible, what kind of existing conditions are acceptable or need to be improved in order to kind of set that baseline condition of having outdoor entertainment at a certain level of attendance. So, um, rather than think about, you know, doing five normal events and three big events, or three normal events and five big events, it's more like, I, I would recommend just thinking about what kind of conditions, uh, on the site are appropriate for events like this, and, and, you know, again, dealing with rain dates and, uh, those kinds of things, I, I would not recommend saying, you know, it's only gonna be Fridays, or it's, or limiting them to, providing some flexibility, but also setting some reasonable limits on noise and hours and dates.
Just whatever I understand, is that, I admit I lied before, I wasn't, just a little rent dude.
So what I'm, what I'm, what I'm proposing, or what I'm, what I'm offering, or however, whatever, what I'm putting in is that I'm open, I do most of my business on the weekends, that's when I have most of my music, uh, Saturdays and Sundays, the shows are not 5:00 PM, the outside music tends at 5:00 PM. Within 5:00 PM, I'm within the noise ordinance, I'm meeting, or I am less than the noise ordinance, and I will continue to do that. Friday nights, I do a show, um, it's very unlikely that it would be on the big stage, and then at night, a lot of my shows will be on the indoor stage, so that takes care of a lot of the problems, although I don't historically do a lot of late night shows. I put, what I would like to do is bring some big names into town and give that a whirl. And when I say big names, I'm not talking people, you know, you pay a hundred thousand dollars for a, sell them, ninety, you know, a hundred dollar tickets, you know, people that, you know, were hot at one time, and now they're kind of semi-retired, like, you know, people on their rise. So I'll say, that is really separate than my regular conditional use. So what I'm saying is, I do, I do music Saturdays and Sundays, every Saturday and Sunday, uh, from 1:00 to 5:00 PM. Bike Week, I do an exclusive show, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then Saturday and Sundays, I got my regular shows. And then, uh, Memorial Day Monday, Labor Day Monday, those two holidays, I have bands too. It's when people are riding their motorcycles, and when people are, you know, having fun, is when I have music. And I used to, when I first came in, I, I did music at night, it doesn't make sense in this town, you know, there's pros and cons on business sense, yeah, the business just isn't there, because everybody knows they gotta drive home. They don't, and I, I can stay up until 1:00, you know, but I've been closing it 10, 3 years, right, because that's what business is. And I have no problems, not going with, no headaches, everyone's respectful, everybody's my age, ready for bed at 10:00 anyway. So, uh, as far as the big shows though, that would happen, you know, I don't know what kind of decisions have to be made here, but I thought it'd be a good time to talk about it, and, you know, they say, allow me a certain number of shows the first season, and if they don't go well, I don't, I don't do them next year. But like I said, if I, if there's reasonable steps that I can take to continue with, like you say, oh cheesy, we're above the noise level, maybe it's time to put a second layer on the fence, a foam insulation or whatever, to take other steps to improve the situation, or if it's, you know, if financial is reasonable for me to spend $500,000, take Bear Sound for three shows a season, that's, that's a good one.
I just wanted to point out, um, section landscaping of parking lots, page 62, if anybody's interested in looking at it, if you read it, um, it says landscaping around within parking areas shades hot surfaces and visually softens hard surface look of parking Parking areas must be designed and landscaped to create a pedestrian-friendly environment. A landscape border must be created around parking lots. Any parking lot containing 10 or more parking spaces must include one island or one or more landscaped islands within the interior of the lot. There must be at least one island for every 20 spaces. Landscaping must screen the parking area from adjacent residential uses and from the street.
I'm not developing any new parking areas though, I'm not, you know, nothing's changed on the side, you know, the impervious, uh, surface remains the same.
This doesn't say anything about if it's a new parking area or not.
Public area.
And this area on the left, it strikes me as that you don't usually park as many vehicles over there as you plan to, so I'd like to see some, something, um, just part of the ordinance that we're supposed to take into account when we have these larger, I mean, I counted 50 on the right, and then there's some in the back, and then there's the new motorcycle area, so it's quite a few parking spaces, I mean, and I'd love to see you be able to fit everybody in there so they're not parked on the street. I don't have a problem with that.
Well, what I, what my intention to do back here is, uh, because it's all ground and soft and grass and all that, is I was gonna be putting in some, uh, some pavers, if you will, concrete pads, just small, probably, probably about 24 inches wide, just so a motorcycle, it kind of tells people how to park.
Right.
With their motorcycle, because without it, it's just a cluster.
Right, that's why I was asking about the directors, yeah.
By putting those in place, people know where to put their kickstand so their bike doesn't tip over.
Yeah.
That, that's, you know, that's the only addition I was considering putting up here, just to organize it better. But, you know, people have been parking back there, I mean, it's always been accessible. I mean, the entrance, this entrance here and the, you know, the, the traffic flow around the back has been there since before I opened the property.
Well, it's just something that's in the zoning ordinance, we're supposed to follow, I'm just pointing it out to the board, and, you know, making the statement that we're supposed to address that. Um, I mean, there is some, you know, it says the parking areas must, uh, landscaping must screen the parking area from adjacent residential's and from the street, so, I mean, you could say you needed some sort of screen along 109 too, but, um, I don't know if that's necessary, I mean, and once again, it's, it's the board's kind of decision, what they, what they think, but.
So you're asking for plantings, that's what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Eight islands, you're looking for landscaping.
Yeah, it's just landscaped islands.
For a certain motion.
One for every 20 spaces.
Does that have any effect, this is a, but does it have any effect on, you know, these, level, decibel?
I would think so, I mean, depends on the size of your plantings, how tall they are.
Generally, uh, those kinds of things are more for aesthetics, as opposed to visualer sound buffers, and like it said, to shade, create shade in the parking lot.
This is a nice thing, well Gavin, I quickly, lots of times, uh, don't see things the same way. I don't think it's in the board's purview to go back on something that's been existing, unless it's a hazard, uh, then I think it would be proposed anyway. Uh, he's not, he's, like I said before, he's not here for a parking lot, and you have to be consistent with what you do. So my statement is here, he is parking on gravel, has grown up with some grass, uh, I hauled a bunch of gravel in there 40 years ago, so I know that's what it is. Uh, if you're gonna require Mr. Martinez to do this, then across the street, when the fairground opens back up, you're gonna have to require them to put an island for every 10 spaces, uh, for the thousand cars they park inside the fairground.
Well, we are gonna require that Dennis, with their new project on 13th Street, that whole new parking lot.
That's a new po, that's a new parking lot.
That's a new parking lot.
Yeah, and let's stay focused on this, that right case, yeah.
Well, what I'm saying is the same thing, you have to be consistent in what you do, otherwise you're opening yourself up to liability, and he's not here for a parking lot.
Well, I don't wanna argue about it, I'm just pointing it out.
The, right along, right along here is, uh, is an ATV truck that is used by everybody that has, and everybody's respectful, and they, they bring their EPVs right down, down the lawn, and then they enter back and then run along, and so, you know, that would be, you know, in addition to that, you know, I just, respectfully, I, I just don't see, it's more of a hindrance to the operation than it is healthy, especially when you deal with motorcycle park. And also the people that, you know, the people that, that picture us, they usually go into these big motorcycle rallies, it's like going to the fairgrounds, it's the same atmosphere. You got food vendors, you got live music, you've got people selling stuff, it's the same thing, it's, it's a festival, and it's not like a shopping center where, you know, you, you know, there's orders, it's just a different, totally different environment.
I'd like to, uh, ask for a motion to approve three to five shows, and then we can revisit it.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'd like to wait until we get the information about the, the wall itself, the, you know, like.
Engineering is coming.
Yep, those, I'd like to see those diagrams before we approve the thing. Um, there was a couple other things we should see before we actually vote to approve this thing, I don't think we're actually there tonight.
Although we had a motion, we should have looked for a second, for three to five shows, and revisit it.
Well, there's, there's two pieces here if I may, there's, there's the President of the Board of Business, that I was in, you know, I was apparently in danger of violating my conditional use permit, so on the days that I committed to doing my music on weekends and all that, let's, let's keep the, the big shows out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we okay with that?
I would agree, I, I agree with Gavin, though, I think we would like to see that his current operation is in his condition. What you're gonna get from the engineer on the wall?
Yep.
And then again, generally, and, you know, the words generally, I'm okay with your shows on the days listed, but the way it's written, you know, you could have a show on Tuesday, and well, say, well, that's just general.
Right, but I mean, that was, I, you know, I put it that way because of issues that Mr. Smith brought up, like if there's a ring gate and the concert got pushed off, now I've got music on, I didn't say I was putting up music, not fun. But, you know, I've been here for 11 years, no sir, the table's that I do.
I made a motion, and then we put this on the table, but, uh, until Mr. Martinez applies the CBO, where he has the information that the board wanted, and, uh, we don't want, we spent over an hour on it next, we obviously want more information.
Well, this is the engineering, just let it be known, just let it be known that the engineering I'm having done is structural engineering.
Very nice.
Structural engineering, it, it, you know.
It's not sound engineering.
It's not sound engineering, however, if you, anybody, you know, gets a chance, you know, get on your computer and, you know, any, just to get an idea of the effort that I'm making, although, to this point, in my opinion, from what my noise needs is, I did not violate any sound ordinance, well then, that would, currently, I cannot violate that. However, I am putting this wall up as a, a gesture in the right direction to be a better name, for lack of a better word, because technically I could put a six-foot fence all around, you know, good, but I don't, I want to be a good neighbor.
Right.
I don't want complaints, nobody wants complaints, it's not a different business, because I need to stay in this town, I don't wanna stay in this town.
We have a motion on the floor from Dennis Long.
A second.
Give a second. Anyone accept it?
Repeat the motion, Dennis.
They're table, uh, this until, uh, Mr. Martinez, uh, forwards the information that the board wanted, uh, the CEO, and then there'll be another need to, uh, to review.
Yeah, although we just heard, we're probably not gonna see what we're looking for.
Well...
You have a second? I'll, I'll second that. Maybe we should list out some of the conditions that we're looking to see so that it's clear to everyone?
Like, what's your bread and butter? You were, you were talking about your bread and butter on the days, you know, specific dates for your concerts. That's one of the things that we want to see.
I can't give you specific days, I don't have any...
Come on, booze.
I don't have any plan for it, you know, obviously, that's why I'm here.
I like the idea of setting that issue aside, you know, when, instead of having it in the application to do these 10 large, uh, events, uh, you know, perhaps we could go to some lower number to test it out.
Well, that's what I, that's what I, I can't move forward because I'm in space planning, you know, for, for me to guess of it.
Right. Yeah, I got it.
We're gonna table it, but I'm gonna call for the vote on the motion, Gavin, second. All in favor? Public hearing?
Sure.
Would you like to schedule a public hearing?
A little instruction as far as, you know, like I said, this is structural engineering only. You're gonna require me to go out and hire us, I don't think you have to take a look at what that's like to propose. You know, like, but what I propose is, this is where we're starting. If it's not as effective as I need it to be, then I add more. I suppose you don't need it.
Is it, do you look to assume that structural en- I mean, the, um, the decibels that they use, do they use the same machine that you're using?
Uh, I, I...
In, probably, it's just a little handheld device, we bring them, we often bring them to the mineral extraction to see how loud the crusher is and that kind of thing.
So why would you...
Joyce has one, I...
And then, uh, Ken had asked me, uh, about the unit I was using, if it was, said something about A and, and...
Calibrated.
It is an A.
I think, I think perhaps that, your question would be answered at the public hearing, if they could, if you can bring the public in and get some public input as to how the, like, I, what I'm feeling from the board is that some of the, some of the board members are a little tentative because it's a large decision. I think we, the, the board would benefit from perhaps hearing the little input from the public, and at that point, we could make a determination after we've received, after we've received the documentation that you're preparing already, if that is adequate for sound prevention. I, I personally, I think that's a great spot to start at.
Okay, so you said sound prevention, but like I said, this is a, a structural engineer house, not a sound engineer.
I, I understand that, but at that point, you know, we can make that determination depending on the feel that we get back from the public as to if it's going to be adequate or if everybody's, we can feel the public out and make an informed decision at that point.
Yeah, it, it just, you know, that's why I ask, you know, see how, what I propose, how it works out in life, in life form, you know, because regardless of anything, it, it's going to help no matter what.
Sure.
It's definitely gonna defend the sound.
It's got somewhere.
Yep.
Can I get a vote on public hearing?
Yep.
Can I get a motion for a public hearing?
I'll make a motion to have a public hearing on the condition of use, so.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? And we'll set it for March, uh, 18th?
Well, you have to, you can, when, when can you do it?
Yeah.
Can you do it first Thursday in April?
A Thursday?
Yeah.
First Thursday in April?
What, what would be the next one? Possible date?
First Thursday in April.
Oh, you gotta come back on the, uh, maybe June or, uh, come back in this, come back in town on the 2nd of Thursday.
April 1st.
April 4th.
April 1st?
April 1st.
Great.
Is that fair?
Thank you.
I will say, Greg, the, whatever you did to address the burnout itself, I didn't, I live over that way, and the no, the noise doesn't dance, don't bother me, but what did bother me was that burnout, so I'm glad that, uh, that's minimized.
Well, you know, uh, one of the, uh, one of the neighbors came over from, from, uh, the barn, and, and I was a good fortune, a lot of those folks are my customers, you know, and also, you know, a burnout's a burnout, a lot of people take advantage of it, a lot of people enjoy it, it's about horse power, things of that nature. But, when you gotta live across the street from it, unless it's for day in, day out, I get it. So, I simply, I, I, I bought some, uh, bought some neighbors from around, and I also put out a post on social media, and, uh...
I think there's almost an immediate end to that.
Customers are respectful.
The burnout.
Pretty fortunate.
It's gonna be good to sign up in Facebook.
I can't guarantee you can fight on burnouts, I mean, that is confirmed, so... Sir, thank you very much, everybody.
Yeah, thank you for coming in.
I will get, I will get a copy of the deed, or just give it to, uh...
You can go right to Christina, yeah.
All right, may I call, uh, Mr. Dennis Long? 197 Flat Ground Road Map, 236 Lot 004, best, best practical location application. Mr. Long is trying to, is applying to create a eight-by-26 kitchen addition and a six-by-16 porch on his existing home within 30% expansion allowance located in the Resource Protection Buffer.
That's my, my, uh, getting nutshell. I wanna add eight feet on the front of the kitchen road, and eight by, uh, 26, and half of that would be an open porch, the other half closed in. On the south side of the house, uh, is an existing, uh, six-by-eight closed-in porch, and I wanted to change it, uh, to six-by-six feet. And that's, that's it for myself. That house was built in the, around 1980, long before, uh, these mats were changed. This here, those people that are interested in looking at it, is a shortland zone that was bought, uh, adopted by the town in 2011. This here's the lot we're looking at. This was, uh, was not, any of this was in a lot fire with nothing in the due resource protection. I own this land for, uh...
Dennis?
Long time, I'm sorry. Shut up.
Thank you.
This is a lot of...
Yep, you gotta recuse yourself in this one. Are you considering explaining the project?
I'll have to explain, when you're near the water, and, and you want them to...
Thank you. Thank you. I think everybody's got the gist of what Dennis is looking to do. The, uh, Resource Protection District, you can see, is, is a large portion of his property. We, I have some questions on this resource, as a new code officer, I have some questions regarding this area specifically down by Flat Ground Road and the Resource Protection area. If I understand this correctly, the, the entire board is new? With the acceptance of Mr. Long, you, you two are the two veterans?
Yeah, I mean, I've been on the board for 10 years.
Oh, perfect. So, so I'm kinda looking for a determination of where this portion of the GIS came from for this resource protection? To get off subject a little bit, I guess.
How it was delineated?
Yes. Yeah, it's, so if you could point me in the right direction, I'd appreciate it, but that's another issue afterward, looking at Dennis's, Dennis's project, um, his, I, the additions he proposed is, uh, obviously, he's the greatest practical extent, we're not, I wouldn't think in this particular situation to be practical to ask him to move the house to add that little bit on. He's in the Resource Protection District, there's no per se shoreline endangerment at that point. He is just barely, at this point, this is the best practical location because there is a section of flood zone around him. The house actually is not in the flood zone currently, so I would believe that this is the best practical location for this addition. But that's up for you guys to, for you folks to decide.
It's within, uh, what is it, 30% calculation?
It is, yep. And we're using area, this, uh, we're kinda tabling some of the things we talked about the last meeting, such as, uh, such as footprint posed and then designate, this, we've got some updates to do, but that's for later date. We'll, we'll continue the way that we have been operating at this point for, for floor area and volume, and this certainly is well within that equation.
Well, Dennis can't speak, so somebody has to...
Looking for a motion?
Um, I guess just ask you about the foundation real quick, Dennis, it's, uh, poured concrete, do you have a basement?
Yeah, that, that house has a, a half a basement, and the addition would, uh, use them, uh...
Solid tubes.
You're gonna have to tell me, uh, the solid tubes or the foot things?
Yep, the pre-cast Bigfoot.
Yeah.
Yep. Those are...
I'm not believing I'm gonna use, but, uh, you got it.
Yep. They're adequate for frost protection.
Yeah.
You'll just have to seal that underneath, of course.
Of course.
Yeah, to eliminate any insects or, and, and obviously to, to insulate.
Motion. Any other questions for Dennis?
And have you expanded, uh, structure since 1989 in any particular fashion?
No, it hasn't been expanded at all.
Yeah. I'll make a motion, we, we waive the certified plot plan on this application, though we do usually ask for them with our 30% expansions.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
And where's your driveway on this? Does it go pretty much straight 90 from Flat Ground Road, or?
Yes, exactly. Yes.
Probably be a bit straight there.
The house is, uh, like, 25 feet, you know, my driveway was in...
Put the other way on.
I had, uh, looked at, uh, what it, what the existing house was. It was like 100 and 200, and, uh, that's a 500 foot lot. It's basically in the middle of the lot, um, my driveway is, is the halfway, is 250 feet, and 250 feet on that side, 200 feet, 50 feet on the south side, and my driveway is just the south of the house. Where that lot line is across the Flat Ground Road, where that property line is, that's where my driveway is. It's basically where it's just a rectangle, yeah, right at that rectangle.
Check that Google, that's not way up there. Google Earth there.
That place was like 100 and...
123 times today in the world, it uses... Each one each is all, once it gets confused.
And obviously, it's over 200 feet from each of the property lines.
That's all right, we're gonna stall.
My land is 5.3, that's also my land, it's land I bought separate, I mean, but it's still my land, but that's just the original house lot, it's one that's in yellow.
That's okay. Looking for a motion? Looking for a motion to approve?
I'll move, uh, that we approve the application of Dennis Long at 197 Flat Ground Road Map 236 Lot 04 for best practical location.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you guys, I'll talk again.
He was killing them. He was like a kid in the candy store for a minute.
Good, good, just in time, just to, just in time to go back to the good neighbor.
That's right, that's right.
All right, now, uh, old business. Probes changes to the town of acting zoning ordinances, uh, short-term rentals.
Quick question, did we try to schedule a hearing for today for these, or what happened with that?
I thought it was next week.
Oh, we, oh, we have a hearings?
We have a hearing scheduled.
Okay. And how did it go with the selectmen?
What's that?
How'd it go with the selectmen when we, um...
I guess that we left them, but it's all good.
Okay. All right.
Happy to leave five spots.
Yep.
Do you wanna go through one by one and approve the other three, and then say it's the good neighbor for the loaded one, or what do you wanna try to do, all of them at once like you did last?
Yeah, what are the objectives for tonight? If we, if we schedule a public hearing, we can wait for, uh, public comment before we, um, I mean, it's totally up, I, I'm not sure what action we're gonna take on these tonight, what, is there anything anybody would like to do with them?
If any of those selectmen are requiring, requiring an official vote from the book, from the planning board by the end of the month.
What's the purpose of the meeting, we schedule next week? Thank you.
To finalize drafts, whatever changes you want to make. Yeah, if there's a change, if you guys decide you want to change something, that's what I was gonna do, and have them ready.
Okay, so we'll just go through them and see if there's any changes we wanna make? Timber harvesting, pretty straightforward.
We gotta, hopefully, never find the word, not going to go to the...
Right. I make a motion, we put these timber harvesting changes forward to the selectman as written.
You have a second? Motion approved.
So...
Just structures of the lot, we'll do it backwards.
Sure.
Which is...
Pink one.
No, that's one.
Yeah. Only got two of those, that's what's messing me up.
What are we looking at?
Uh, the yellow copy.
That's a dock?
Yes. Dock's another shoreline construction.
I'll make a motion to, uh, to put the, uh... We put the. What's the title on that?
It's a zoning ordinance relative to section.
In 2.7.5.
Yeah.
Uses in 5.16. Go to the selectmen.
As written. I'll second that.
Yeah, just a procedural question. Are these motions to schedule a public hearing? Or at the planning board level to make the recommendation to the select board?
We're making we are. My my understanding is what we're doing tonight is hoping to put this to the selectmen, so the selectmen will put it to town meeting.
Okay.
We need a public hearing, Ben, I guess. But if we can't then once they were, we had a public hearing a year ago. So I assume we have to have a new public hearing to move them forward. I don't know that.
The the way I'm reading the ordinance is that the public hearing at the planning board is required as part of the process.
Yeah. When we move this forward to the selectmen once. But then they made the thing that we're not implementing because everything was too too much paper.
Okay.
Too long and.
So we need the public hearing to move them forward? Is that what you're saying, Ben?
That that is my understanding. And I think what I've heard Dennis say is that there was a public hearing. And.
But not timely now.
Uh, well, it's.
You have to have a certain amount of time.
Right. You can't have a public hearing too close to the town meeting.
But the other way it isn't.
And then the question is, you know, is it if is it? Is it okay to have a public hearing in 2020 for a 2021 town meeting?
That's why I think we ought to have a level, but.
So maybe we should be making the motion to put them forward to the hearing.
I I don't.
As written, no? Okay.
What it says is in our ordinance is we may have a public hearing. It doesn't say in our ordinance that we should.
Right. Big difference.
And there's a big difference.
They enchant.
It's too late. I wanted to schedule last week, so I didn't do it.
We don't have to have a public hearing.
I mean, a lot of the things we do seem redundant, but if I I don't mind going through these things again and and just double checking. There's no changes people want to make and.
Plus, if we move them forward, it's really too late.
That's why I'm trying to go through them individually as opposed to as a packet.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
But my my experience of public hearings from the planning board especially, no matter how much shit and group followers agreed or whatever, it always went forward to the people where the planning board intended. I've never seen any changes.
Well, sometimes people pick up things that are even grammatical errors.
Well, I.
Changes like and we changed that and it's not the exact verbiage we had. So I mean, there are. There have been some changes. It's not common, but.
But anyway, I made a motion. Uh, we haven't said.
I'll I'll second putting this document forward as is to public hearing and to the selectmen.
Well, it. To the selectmen?
I guess so. I mean.
That I think that's that's what I'm sure here. I don't mind which one.
Just try to.
You know, too much uncertainty.
I mean, we were getting on the office and we're not getting to the public hearing, but.
Too much uncertainty.
Yeah, that's what we need to release this whole.
Motion to move to the selectmen then?
That's what I made.
Yeah, second.
Second.
All in favor? Storage buildings. Going to go to relative to construction of storage buildings.
This is just changes to the land you tried, isn't it? Yeah. I'll make a motion to. Move forward while the ordinance relative to the construction of storage buildings.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, uh, let's move on to the good neighbor act.
This was definitely the most confrontational one amongst the board and. In my opinion, if there was one, we weren't going to put forward to the selectmen, it would be this one. I feel like the good neighbor policy is um. Is pertinent to residential development and to subdivisions and conditional use permits. And many types of uses, not just commercial or those subject to site plan review.
Can I ask a question, Ben? Can you just clarify? Why, if it's already in the ordinance, why can they not enforce it? Why does it have to be in the commercial section to be enforced? This is where we were last week.
Right.
A week ago.
Right. So to review, um, you know, I I think that the the key portion, the the whole reason that this is being discussed is a proposed move of the wording from the zoning ordinance to a section of the site plan ordinance. The purpose of that move would be to have it apply to site plan applications, which by and large are commercial applications. They are large subdivision applications. Uh, as it's written and where it's located in the ordinance today, it it applies to all uses in all zoning districts. Unless otherwise stated, so. I I'm not exactly sure how it's been enforced in the past, but I think based on that wording and where it is in the zoning ordinance, it would apply to all subdivision, site plans, conditional uses as well as regular building permits. So when when people come in for a an addition or a new home or those kinds of things, that they would be looking at these provisions of the ordinance as part of their application and and site plan development. So I again, I wasn't privy to all of the conversation that happened back in 2019 and 2020 around this proposal, but what you have in your packets in blue, um, there there's a couple of changes and and the first change is uh, all of the section numbers are changed from section five to section six, which is within the site plan ordinance, which would make it applicable to site plan applications only as opposed to all of those other things. And there is a specific word change right on page one of 10 where the language, the wording that says around the applicability, it shall apply to existing wording, all uses in all zoning districts. And the proposed wording change is says it shall apply to all commercial uses in all zoning districts. So that um, does make it more limited. So putting it in site plan limits the applicability to only those projects going through site plan. And that wording change further restricts it so that it it would not apply to residential projects like large subdivisions. It only would apply to commercial based on that wording.
Go out. I have a motion to take the word commercial.
And have have for that section under the applicability, just retain that existing wording, apply to all uses in all zoning districts.
I mean, this was put forward by the CEO at the time. And he thought it should go in site plan review. He was under the opinion, uh, when they did this, uh, it was just intended for commercial use. But it didn't end up that way. And that's why he changed it and the next one to review was people who that was the attack when they did it. And it's like everything is out of state, and that people want to take the consequences. It's like I stated for a long time. There's so much stop in this. There's so many restrictions in this. That if you follow this to the latter, honestly, might would be just the only way. For four years, I would just, I mean, it's just. One one blanket, like I said before, it doesn't fit all. It's kind of like John said, there's so many things that will be in our ordinance. And I agree with that, but there's some things in here that shouldn't be in our ordinance. Because it just not doesn't make any sense.
Give us an example, Dennis.
What I would like to do is when we know this doesn't work, take this out and put in a site plan review and have the planning board the next year go through the pot and put the parts that we believe should be in our ordinance in it.
But what parts don't work, you know, I guess what I heard at the previous meeting that where it is, the reason for moving it, I heard at the last meeting was there was no flexibility. Right? So because it's in the ordinance, everything has to comply with this. And on a site plan, you couldn't waive it, right? And so I look at this to say, okay, well, what what are the things you that historically he's wanted to waive? Because I, you know, the light thing is, while that's very direct, that seems to me, you know, people comply with lighting. The noise thing is there's a set hours and decibels. And we don't even in the town have a meter. So you know, is that going to be enforced? You gotta have good being neighborly and that sort of thing. You can't legislate being neighbor neighborly. But I guess I don't get the what people want to waive in this. What what?
What's wrong? How do you enforce that?
Well, well, give me an example. If if my neighbor is having an outdoor concert and it's, what is it, 65 decibels?
60.
Then, okay, then I'll go over and ask him to stop.
Who measures it?
Don't know. It'll be too loud for me. Right, exactly. But if you don't have it, what are you gonna do? It's okay.
You can't do anything with it.
I do have, as the code officer, I do have some questions. I don't disagree with what you're saying. If it's the the decibels, if if it's loud and it's obnoxious and it's involved in a detriment to your peaceful enjoyment. Um, we have a couple of different designations here. It says daytime and nighttime. What hours are those? Between what hours? It doesn't specify.
No, they're in there somewhere. They define daytime and then.
Well, since timber harvesting says not between five and nine.
Well, that's exceptions.
That's exceptions, exactly.
I I think there's.
Needs a little work, that's all.
Well, there's daytime hours. It's in the definitions. There's specific definitions for this part of the ordinance. Yeah, daytime hours, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and hours 9:00 AM through 10:00 PM on Sundays. It's so we do have it defined.
So it's at 10:00 PM on Sundays?
It's page two of 10.
No, no, I I heard you. I just was. I was reading.
In here, you can't have a pile of lumber. Show me where that is. You're getting there.
Two or two.
You can't. You can't have any metal.
It doesn't use the word subdivision.
I think it's a mistake. You can't have metal. You can't have, uh, vehicles.
Can we put something in there within sight of the neighbor, within so many feet of a lot line? Can we put something in?
Page 60.
Obviously, where you and I, Dennis, where we live, it wouldn't apply. But it would definitely apply to subdivisions, and I would hate to see this taken out completely. The case that I'm thinking about is what happened recently with a gravel pit in a residential area. It was supposed to be, Ken said, they were moving a driveway, changing a driveway, and, you know, the people. I don't know how many yards he was going to take out of there, but it was a lot. I don't know whatever happened with that, but if you took something like this out, nobody would have any recourse because it's not in the ordinance because, you know, it's just gone. That's my concern. Because there are, you know, when I was growing up, I can, I don't know if you can remember, some of you might be able to remember. Um, out in Wisconsin, they never thought that a religious sect was going to move into town and the chanting was going to bother them. They lived in a very quiet area. They didn't have an ordinance. There was no way they could stop that. And once they come in, you can't go back and change it, right? So I just would hate to see some of this stuff go out and just be thrown, be tossed out.
My house was in the middle of a gate with this wall.
Nobody's gonna bother you.
Who cares?
Yeah, nobody's gonna bother you. Those kinds of things.
But you have to. You have to.
But if you're someone like me, where I live.
Dennis, all it says is what, you know, lighting's gonna be for security, et cetera, et cetera. If you got exterior lighting, turn it on between 11 and 6, you know.
I know, but I have rights. You have one. I have rights. If I want to, if I want to light up my my house in the middle of a lot of land, I've got the right to do that. And I say, there's nobody else who has the right to tell me anything.
Yeah, but that's where they measure it half the property line. It's whatever, one half foot candles per. It it's it's there's a measurement at the property line. So if you want to light up your house and and there's a wooded buffer, your neighbor isn't negatively affected according to this.
It has to be down lighting yet.
Well, why wouldn't you want to have down lighting? I mean.
I don't want to light up my movie out.
Christmas lights.
Yeah.
If you live like where I live, where, you know, the neighbor could just be.
You gotta do what you want, obviously, on the two we might be.
Sure.
Yeah, I I from my perspective, there's there's a couple of things. One is in regard to these kinds of standards. I think that there there is a lot of overlap with the requirements that are already in subdivision and site plan. So I I don't think from that standpoint, having this move over to site plan only is going to be adding. Won't be adding anything on projects that are going through that process because this wording applies to them already today. It it the way it's written and where it's located does make it apply to all single-family homes and and all uses in all zones, as it says. And I'm I'm not aware of other communities that have these kinds of standards for um, single-family homes that are not part of a subdivision or site plan review process. I I think that these these are appropriate for larger projects that do warrant town review uh, and are being designed as commercial projects or large residential projects. So um, I I think the other side of this is, you know, are these the right standards? Are there things in here that have enforceability issues? Are there things in here that are maybe too vague? Uh, when it talks about, you know, minimizing impacts or uh, those those kinds of standards that don't have a clear threshold that you can actually measure and enforce against. So I think that there's room to make improvements within the existing wording. I think that the the task for the board at this point is much more limited is should they be in. be in the section of the ordinance where they are today, where it applies and should be for all uses and all zones? Or should it only apply to projects going through site plan review, which is what was reviewed last year and is the current proposal?
There's a couple of places in here I'd like to just point out quickly that do, you know, if you're just talking about a single-family residential house, these are things that are in here that affect more than just their abutting neighbor. I'm on page eight of 10. At the bottom, we've got, well, I mean, every single one of them, but I'm not going to read them all. View protection, says when the proposed development is located within the view shed of a view, as identified in the comprehensive plan from a public street or facility, the landscaping must be designed to minimize encroachments of all building structures, landscaping, and other features on the identified view. And then page nine of 10, ridge line protection. When the proposed development is located on a hillside that is visible from a public street, road, water body, or facility, the development must be designed so that building structures and other improvements do not extend above the existing ridge line or alter the ridge profile significantly when viewed from public streets, roads, water bodies, or facilities. This provision may be waived for communication towers, spotting towers, and similar facilities that must be located above the ridge line for operational reasons. Then right below it, hillside development. Similar, when a proposed development is located on a hillside that is visible from a public street, road, water body, or facility, the development must be designed so it fits harmoniously into the visual environment when viewed from the public, by the public from public areas. In predominantly natural environments, site clearing must be minimized and vegetation must be retained or provided to minimize the visual intrusion of the development. In developed environments, the appearance of the new development, when viewed by the public from public areas, must be compatible with the existing visual character in terms of scale, massing, and height to the maximum extent reasonable.
Yeah.
And then the last one I want to read out loud was the shoreline development. When a proposed development is immediately visible from a great pond, river, or stream, the development must be designed so that it fits harmoniously into the visual environment when viewed from the water body. In predominantly natural environments, site clearing must be minimized, natural vegetation must be maintained adequate, excuse me, adjacent to the shoreline to soften the appearance of the development, and vegetation must be retained or provided to minimize the visual intrusion of the development. In development, in developed shoreline environments, the appearance of the new development when viewed from the water must be compatible with the existing visual character in terms of scale, massing, height, to the maximum extent possible. Storage and service areas must be screened or minimized, or landscaped to minimize their visual impact. So all these kind of things are things that would be applicable to a single residential home. You know, you have somebody buys a 10-acre lot and it's, it has a hill on it. So you got someone in a boat, you're looking out, you've got somebody on the road looking. You know, these are things that affect the character of the town. You know, we have a big house up on top of the hill, you know, that affects everyone's view. And things like this are in there to, I mean, they say to protect the rural integrity of the town, like they say in the comprehensive plan. So, I don't know, I just, I feel like we should give it the benefit of the doubt that it was put in there for good reason, that we want Acton to look like Acton.
That's been a long time since we've done. What Acton looked like has been a long time.
Well, no, Acton looks like what it does today. You go out there, that's what it looks like.
No, I agree.
And then you think, what's it going to look like in 10 years? And what would we like it to look like?
What I'm saying, I can make my case. This town is full of hills and valleys. Okay? Everything needs well and well. Everybody's uphill. If you're not, you're underneath the water. All right? Everything's uphill. And you have places going up and change around the water bodies all the time. It changes the integrity of the environment. Okay? When you have this little 2020 by camp there, and next thing you know, you've got this 5,000 square foot house there. Well, that, okay, doesn't bode with the integrity of what Acton, the little camps everywhere. Everything's on a side hill. You can't maintain the visual when somebody built a house over on a hill here and you're driving across the bridge and you see this house over there on the hill. You can't, you can't stop that. What it says in the valleys.
But it's nice that people...
It's saying to mitigate it.
Take it into account, I mean.
The stuff he just wrote.
Well, if you put a house there and you cut out a place just for the house, well, how are you going to stop the visibility of the house?
With trees, vegetation, the things that he said, not above the ridge line, the various...
The design, the design itself. It's not like we're saying people can't build the house to their...
It's what it's like.
No, it doesn't. It says to fit it harmoniously into the natural environment. So it's, because a lot of the, a lot of our town is based on tourism. People come here, they want to be out on the lake fishing, and they want it to look like it's wooded around the lake. They don't want to just see these patchworks of brightly colored houses and, well, Dennis, it is what it is, but...
What I'm saying, what they want to see is irrelevant. I mean, we'll keep going, let's go to the odor.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, that's a huge one.
I mean, I don't want to just bury what I was just talking about, but...
Anybody, anybody that has been living next to a place that commercials grow in this medical marijuana. You keep your kid in the house for the state cell, it smells like a scum. How are you going to enforce that?
It's right here, Dennis.
How are you going to enforce it?
Well, you have two options, at least.
Who's going to enforce it? And how do you enforce it?
I think, I think, Dennis, the point is...
You need to measure the odor somehow.
Who? How?
Well, you look at what it says about odor, is it the last, the very last page, odor levels, one through five.
Right. As CEO...
I think we're getting stuck here.
Excludes.
Right.
And they take a lot.
Well, this is common, we just...
This was...
Muddy the waters, but...
I bet you really put it in.
No.
Yes, it was.
Dennis, this was put in...
I know it was put in. And I know why. And I'm against it. I was willing to, I could work with everybody on some of this stuff, and everybody would say that this stuff is all enforceable, is absolutely wrong.
Well, and I've always...
I have four cones. And you don't think you're going to make me abide by this unless everybody's going to have to.
Okay, how about, how about looking at it from the standpoint of ending up in a court? And it starts out in the lower court, and then it goes all the way up. What they look at is what's in the ordinance. If it's not in there at all, then you can't take somebody to court for it.
And you can't enforce it?
The courts could enforce it, but, but you have a legal recourse, and that's what the ordinance does. So instead of thinking in terms of Mike going out and trying to enforce the decibel thing, think of it as it's a means for somebody to have recourse, some kind of recourse when they get to the judicial system. And I don't, I just, I don't want everybody to fight here.
Well, we did this last year, too.
I'm not used to that. Come on. Let's move. Let's make a motion here.
I think the number one question to answer is, where in the ordinance should this, the standards as they're written live? Should they be in section five, which is part of the zoning ordinance? Or should they be in the site plan section as proposed? And I, I think maybe the next step beyond that would be, maybe for next year, start, there could be a review of the standards. Are they appropriate? Are they applicable? Are they specific? Are they enforceable? Those are the kinds of things that you would look for in standards. So, you know, I don't think that there's, you know, I would agree that there's a lot of judgment and a lot of general terms in this section, but that's really, I think, kind of the next step, kind of thing. And the question in front of the board tonight is, where in the ordinance should it, should it be placed?
I'll make the motion to move this forward to the selectmen and let the townspeople decide whether they want to do it. Move it back.
I'd like to make a motion that we leave it where it is.
Second.
I'll second that.
Let's take a vote to approve.
As it stands?
As it stands?
As it stands?
I'm not saying accept the commercial, I'm not saying to move it. I'm saying to leave it where it is in the ordinance as it is.
In section five.
And no changes to wording.
As Ben, I think that's what Ben was trying to tell us. Just not articulate in presenting.
It may be, you know, ready for a review, and I don't think that that review's going to happen tonight or in the next few meetings. I think it's more of, you know, in the meantime, should this remain where it is, or should it be proposed, should it go to the site plan as proposed?
So by, let me just clarify, Pat, by saying leave it where it is, it's really no change. So isn't, would the motion be to not send it to the selectmen?
Second.
I, I just want to clarify what it means.
So we have a vote on it.
Vote on it? All in favor? All opposed? I'm staying out of this one.
I want a vote.
I got to see both sides. I'll play the middle field on that one.
That's right.
Next one up would be short-term rental units.
Motion to do not second it forward to the board of selection.
Upstand.
Uh, the pink one, short-term rentals.
Short-term rentals, don't put it forward? Because?
Because I think that going to the public hearing, there was way too, there was an awful lot of negative towards doing this. And I'm just taking what I've got from the public hearing. We do it like this all. Is that what the comment?
So might understand if we don't have this, we don't have anything that addresses rentals.
Anyone to second the motion?
I guess that motion fails.
Oh, for two today.
Motion to approve it as written, move forward?
I just wonder if there was any more discussion on it before we voted. I, I do remember that from a public hearing, that people didn't like it. At the same time, it's an unregulated use in the town. I remember we...
But what about, my question is, after looking at this, is what about long-term rentals? Why aren't they included?
Well, we have to create our own, another one of these things.
For long-term rentals?
If we choose to. Because they're not the same beast as a short-term rental. And a lot of our thought behind that was that a short-term rental, like a weekend rental, that people aren't going to really care, you know, if somebody was renting for the whole summer as opposed to one weekend, and say they were on the lake.
Well, I'm saying even like yearly rentals as well.
Well, that's even a whole nother thing. Yeah. Well, we, those are just holes in the ordinance we need to address.
I would, you know, guess Mike probably has something to say about this, but I, in my opinion, the short-term rental, as defined here, less than 60 days at a time, is a very different use than something like an annual rental. You know, someone who rents a home and lives there all the time. The standards in this ordinance are primarily related to fire and safety, that has to do with structures that are used, kind of a high turnover potential, where there could be any number of folks renting those over the course of a year. I think that one key point in here as well is that there is a provision under additional requirements, number seven, for septic systems. I think that the, there's a very high potential, especially around a lake, to have overburdened septic systems that would cause issues on the lake. And it, I believe that there is an interest in the town having some awareness on where those would be. And understand that, you know, making sure everyone knows that they need to register their rental and making sure that happens is certainly going to be a concern, but I think that having the requirement in place is a legitimate town issue.
I wish I could say, we have two options here. One is to move it forward to the selectmen, and one is not to move it forward to the selectmen. And I made a motion not to move it forward. There was no second. So there's only one other motion that we can have. So I asked you to ask for that motion.
Well, Gavin was just trying to see if there are other words that were concerning or that we thought at this point needed changing, that's all. Nobody's disagreeing with you, Dennis.
Well, they can, they can make the changes, even with the motion. That's what you do. You make a motion, that's how law rules work. You make a motion, you give a second, and you have a discussion.
Motion to move forward with this as written?
No motion to move it forward as written.
Now we discuss.
Discussion.
Dennis, what were, what was the number one thing that people complained about in this ordinance? What was it that upset them the most?
My opinion, Gavin, was the septic systems. You're going to put a new septic system because I'm going to run it out to somebody who had the septic system for three years and it's worked fine. And I ran it out to, I'm going to say, my brother and his wife. Why do I need a septic system? Because it's really not changing the use. The other thing was, but this is a big thing, was the fire alarm, the fire detectors. They would all have to be hardwired. You can't have the battery operated one. And they would all have to talk to each other. And the, the other thing was a contention was the use of the lake, how you access the lake.
Dennis. The amount of time they had to give.
And the amount of time they had.
The amount of time they had for what?
Well, because if you, if you pass this ordinance, for example, in June, it takes effect when it passes. You have people that, we've seen a lot of real estate especially, they rent the places off of the real estate, and a lot of them have them all scheduled, would have them all scheduled for the summer and stuff like that, and they wouldn't be able to do it unless they met all these requirements.
So, so all of those things, what if we just changed, so it's restricted, it's conditional? It is?
I will tell you from the planning board's perspective, and we did this, it was strictly safety of the people and the fire chief really wanted us to do it, and the state fire marshal really wanted us to do it. But there was a huge pushback, like I said, with the community. But there was a huge pushback, right, I said, in the community. And, um, I'm just don't believe that any decision to the neighbor, uh, that the community should decide whether or not they want to do it or not. Uh, just like the good neighbor thing, I, 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 I think it's right that townspeople decide if they want to change something, if they don't. Uh, and all my job is to a, address the concerns, for example, that Mike has or he's going to have, uh, for the possibility of it's adult work and schoolwork and he's going to come to us with, uh, stuff that it's our responsibility to change them. And this is exactly why these five doctors were thrown out was because of the prior CEO. Uh, these are things that need solid, need to be changed. And my intention is, being on this board, moving forward, uh, I'm going to be asking Mike what's working and what's not working. And it's our responsibility, uh, to try to find a way to make it work. And, I mean, like I said before, the people who worked on this, all this stuff here, they worked hours and hours and hours. Every other one of us knew that, Gavin. And we did it for a year, working on this stuff and trying to make it right in, in what the CEO and the, and the fire department and everybody else, uh, wanted to see it and to send it where they want to be. And I said last week I want to move them all forward and that was, uh, shot down, which is fine. That's why you have a committee, you know? Everybody has a voice. Uh, we want to look at these and, uh, um, I mean, you got, it's a cliff, you know? I'm not the one that makes the decisions on this one vote, one meeting.
So, so my, my understanding, you're right that you last week said that you wanted to move it forward, but today you're saying no, you don't want to move it forward.
Well, the last time when I said I want to move all five forward, I couldn't get a second. And then when I said okay, they, they wanted to work on now and then, I said, well, let's move the other four forward and I couldn't get a second. So what to say?
No, but, but.
I'm fine with it.
You moved it by Dennis, second by John, and then everyone for all five, but changes to be included.
That was after when Dennis explained what I was trying to say.
Okay.
And John said, well, Dennis needs what Dennis said, and I'll second.
Right. It's right, it's right in the minutes that we, that we put five of these, that we wanted to put five changes together.
It was the placeholder.
Yeah.
So we came to agreement on, really it was on the, on the.
No, yeah.
Good neighbor. It was a placeholder. So now we're saying no to the good neighbor and this one is on the table to go. Are we voting on it?
There, I believe there was a motion and a second.
Yeah, there was.
And this was the discussion of the motion.
Right, yeah. To move it forward, this was the discussion area.
You don't want to help with that.
Why? I feel like, um, this is a good, good reason to have a public hearing for these changes too, because we don't want to be just trying to push this thing through and people are unaware. Um, but it's, from what I remember from the public hearing, there were some outspoken individuals, but it was just several people who own small rental units now who didn't want to have to make these financial changes rapidly, like Dennis was saying. They felt like this thing was adopted the next day, they would have to have their egress windows in. But I feel like there's, it's always a process. It's, no one would be out there putting eviction notices. They would just have to start the process with the land use office. I don't feel like it's, you know, be like, that's it.
I disagree with that. It's a little, it's a little. Yeah, but I think you start the process.
That these people say, yes, I do have one of these and.
You better start the process, you got any.
We want to have an inspection and, you know.
Or, or you could have an effective date of January first, 2022.
Yay.
Right, we could put something in there that gave applicants X amount of time.
That's a long period.
We didn't end up doing it.
Going to be policed.
Who would you want?
That's my, that's my biggest question. How is this going to be policed? Is, uh, are we going to put somebody online going through real estate sites for, for hours looking for Airbnbs and acting?
I don't know. On Facebook too.
People tell on each other. They know what you had for breakfast here.
That's what I'm getting at. And then what type, what type of teeth? If we pass this, this is, this is a great idea. Don't get me wrong. This is fabulous. The only thing that concerns me is the hour away. They have to be within an hour of the rental property.
So if they live in.
Okay.
They'd be getting closer.
How many people own property on Great East Lake that live more than an hour away?
Okay. That's why it says property owner slash agent.
Right.
So we want to have somebody who, you know, they have this problem with their.
How many are going through an agent? How many are just putting it out on Facebook?
Yeah. But that's, that's the other thing.
I think the term agent could be just, you know, they have this specific issue with the building and they, there's someone that can come within an hour and help them with it.
I think this is great. I think it needs more work.
Yeah.
That, that's all. I think it needs more work before it goes out to the voters, because then, you know, we have the state-approved subsurface wastewater and then it says that we allow four people in a bedroom?
Well, we put, it was put in there to, to ease it for the people who were worried about it.
But man, that's taxing a septic system. Say we've got a two-bedroom septic system and now somebody's using it as an Airbnb, they use the loft as another bedroom, now they've got three bedrooms that nobody knows about, and you've got four people using that two-bedroom septic system.
Well, they don't, you have eight people using it because they have two bedrooms.
Correct, but then somebody turns loft into a third bedroom without, without using appropriate, without pulling an appropriate permit.
Well, they could do that anyway.
And it's very likely. It happens often.
Yeah.
But still, I'm saying that now you're allowing 12 people to rent that place and then we have to tell them to turn around and put another septic system in.
I think it needs more work.
It needs a little bit more work. That's, and that's my, that's my opinion, but it's the board's pleasure. Thank you.
I feel like it would be great to get something in there, even if it needs more work, honestly, so that we, because a lot of these people come and they feel like, oh, now I'm obligated to tell the town about my rental. Some people just come forward and go through the process. You know, it's not like you have to go hunt through the bushes and find every one of these people. Um, and so, you know.
And those are the people that you don't worry about.
Right.
The people that come, that are up front and they register, you know? And then, then you have the other people that say, oh, and you have to police it. So that's.
Well, it would still help the problem. Those people that come forward would reduce, you know, they would help bring these things into conformance. We wouldn't be any worse off, that's for sure.
Absolutely.
You know, and that's what I feel a lot about these enforcement issues we talked about, it's unenforceable. Some of these things, the enforcement will come of its own nature. It won't have to be from the code enforcement officer, because the neighbor says, oh, I, I have a rental unit and I got new carbon monoxide detectors and right next to me's a place, they don't have them, so they'd say, oh, this person's doing it and, you know.
Yeah.
That's how it would go.
And it would snowball that way as well.
Mm-hmm.
It wouldn't just be a.
Clicking for hours?
Yeah, I mean.
Moving forward.
Right. Well, that's what I was trying to say is that I feel like it would be a group effort from, like the lake associations too, because they want to see these, the lakes in good health. And you have these people coming for the weekend, they've got 10 cars there and 20 people in the camp, and there's other policing agencies other than the code enforcement officer who says, we don't like to see that on our lake. What can we do about it? And this gives them something to start with and do about it.
Sure.
Right.
So if we moved it forward and then we put a later date on it, would give us time to work on it, right?
Well, I think if we moved it forward and then we gave people more time to.
To think about it.
Yeah. Conform.
So if you move it forward to the selectmen, this is just one from the selectmen.
Yeah.
And Mike Christine can tell me if I'm wrong. Uh, anything that they want, they want it by the end of the month and it's going to be on the line. That's their decision.
Well, I thought we were going to a town meeting with it.
We will be, we'll be on the line for a town meeting.
Oh, afterwards.
But this is air and fire, this is why you're going.
The governor just extended the state of emergency. I'm, I'm pretty, pretty confident that it's probably going to be by ballot again this year.
Yeah.
So, so I don't, I think the notion of town meeting is probably unlikely, unless it's a giant via Zoom effort.
What they said though, Mike, is that, um, we, one of that was, uh, the town board will do the same thing, uh, just to add, uh, we, we still will be voting on this, on secrecy, the ballot, whether the, the old town meeting.
Good. Do we want to make that one change thing going forward and, uh, because it's clearly not right anyway on the operation of that permit, on or after January 1, 2022?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, do I invest something?
What's that?
Did you pronounce that right?
No, no, it was, they want it shifted to 2022.
Oh, nice.
It's reasonable.
There was a motion and a second and some discussion. And it sounds like some people are asking to amend the motion.
Yeah, I'm trying, it says July, you want to change it to January?
January 1, 2022, that kind of takes away a little bit of that, you know? Shit, I got to have it on July 2nd this summer.
Right.
But we get it on the books for the future.
And it gives us something, you know, where we find out, oh, this isn't working or we need to add this, and then we have some, a base, a foundation to add to or subtract from already in the ordinance. I mean, that's one way to view it too. Everything needs more work.
So motion to approve it with the change from July 1, 2021 to, to January 1, 2022. Can I get a motion on that change? On the whole thing?
I'll motion to move the, uh, short-term rental forward with the change to Article 5.11, Section E, uh, on or after January 1, 2022, without obtaining the required permit is a violation.
Motion second.
Second.
All in favor?
I just want my votes on the chairman. So that's why I'm, I'm.
Want to say.
I think we need to have more.
You think?
Ask Ben.
You think we need to have a public hearing on this too?
Still. What would stop us from having a public hearing?
I, I think the, the, the consideration is the, the need that the select board has to potentially get these on warrant articles, uh, versus the additional time it would take to advertise a public hearing. So I, um, the way I was reading the ordinance earlier this evening was, it appears that, you know, the board should be having a public hearing on these. And I, I think that the, the explanation or the, the caveat that there was a public hearing on these earlier, like way earlier, uh, passes the test for the board to, to meet that requirement.
I might just schedule a public hearing closer to the poll itself.
Ideally, uh, I, I would recommend, uh, something, you know, a, a public hearing associated with this version of the process.
Maybe, uh, the, the.
March 18th?
What's that?
How about March 18th?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because we didn't do IR2.
First, I have to check my schedule, um, because I'm so involved right now.
Oh, yeah, you got.
The warrant finding, everything is really frustrating from school and so on. It is what I'm down to be there.
But that's a regularly scheduled meeting, isn't it?
It's a regular night.
It's a regular night.
Even still.
Yeah, no, I'm, it works for me.
I, I, I have a, uh, budget meeting with school next Thursday for 5:00.
Yep.
And I have a plan to be here at 6:00. So like I said, we was on with, and, uh, I'm just moving that.
John, does that work?
It'll work for me.
Huh?
It'll work for you?
Yep, it's fine.
So public hearing on March 18th. Um, motion to adjourn the meeting?
Dennis want to discuss?
Oh, Dennis, you wanted to discuss something?
Yeah, the, the.
Sorry.
The, the permit with medicinal use, with the last meeting.
Oh, yeah.
The revegetation part of the, uh, motion. I, I definitely buy it, because you can't revegetate something that isn't devegetated. You can't make that requirement. You're not, you're not disturbing vegetation on the place, so it's nothing to revegetate. Uh, because all they're doing on that, I'm talking about the place on Lakeside Drive, which has, has a story, they're not disturbing anything.
Well, they demo the first floor of existing house and rebuild with a second-floor addition of very poor loft. That's what we're looking at. We're looking at, um.
Robert and Jennifer Taylor?
Yeah, map 117.
Yep.
It's up on Lakeside Drive.
Mm-hmm. It says demo the first floor of the existing house and rebuild.
Yeah.
So they're going to have an excavator there tearing the house down and rutting up the yard.
You don't know that.
Oh.
They're not asking for permit for that.
Well, it says to.
They're asking for permit to put on a second story.
No, demo the first floor of the existing house says right in the minutes.
Right. But there's still a problem, basically. They're not changing anything on the, the ground.
We always ask for a revegetation plan. It's, it's standard. I don't even need to mention it.
Revegetating something doesn't make any sense. Why would you, why would you make the requirement that somebody could pay somebody to come up with a plan for revegetation? You're not tearing out any vegetation. It doesn't make any sense.
Well, it's the benefit of the lake.
It's not benefiting anybody, because you're not disturbing the land.
Well, I'm sorry, we, I, I don't feel like we need to revisit that.
Remember the hardship financial.
The, the board could make a motion to reconsider a vote. Um, that's generally part of Robert's rules, that it has to be seconded, um, from that standpoint.
What was the vote? It was fine what you voted for.
I would have voted, and I got a vote in that, but that's not what I think it is. What, how can you make somebody go and pay that for a plan to do something that you're not doing?
And nobody said they had to.
To do it.
They can write the revegetation plan themselves. They didn't say it need to be a certified revegetation plan.
That's the way it always is. You got to.
Okay, well, if it's the way it always is, go with it.
Or, or southern English or whatever, and come up with these plans. That's just the way they do it, they always.
We, we pretty much all do that for every one of these things.
They're, they're tearing out the ground. They're not, they're not, they're not destroying the ground.
I'd, I'd have to go revisit the application, honestly, because I, I don't remember specifically enough what the site looked like. Sometimes these things need help anyway, because they always rake them every year and they could use more plants, you know, so.
I know, but. You're leading three lines.
Well, I guess that's my role on the board. I don't mind that.
You can't really do that.
Yeah, no, I, that's not a problem.
But to make somebody go spend months doing something, they didn't have to, we had to go bear and not want to do it, is ridiculous.
Promotion control.
Well, that's what I want.
Seconds. All in favor of adjourning?
Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
We're having a good time.